Good evening, and thank you, Sean. Welcome to the Select Board's meeting for Tuesday, November 30th, 2021. This meeting is being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of the emergency. And it was signed by the governor on June 16th, 2021. This is not a regular meeting of the board. We've scheduled this meeting for a couple of agenda items that are time-sensitive, and we're going to try to move through the agenda expeditiously. I understand one of our members, Mr. Zulus, has a hard stop at approximately 8:15, so we may take a couple of items out of order. I'd like to begin this evening's meeting with a moment of silence for Ella Wells, a town meeting member for Precinct 9, and also a longtime member of the Milton Access Television Board of Directors. So Ella passed away recently, was buried this morning. And if any members would like to say a word or two about Ella, we did mention this briefly at our meeting, but it was at the end of the meeting the last time, and wanted to recognize her, given her contributions to the town and as a town meeting member at the start of our meeting this evening. Would anyone like to say a few words about Ella before we have a moment of silence and begin the meeting?
Madam Chair, just one second. I'm not sure if everyone knows it. You're correct. Sadly, Ella was buried today, but her husband still is very, very sick, and the people who keep them and their family in your prayers, I think, would be very welcome. It's a very tough time for this family right now, so thank you for that.
Our condolences to the entire Wells family and the children, and also to the M A T V family, employees and staff of M A T V and the Board of Directors, and all of Ella's friends. So the board will now observe a moment of silence in memory of Ella Wells. Thank you all. Would everyone please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, and we'll put the American flag on our screen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you all. First item on our agenda is public comments. Do we have anyone this evening for public comment? So please raise your hand. I don't see anyone on the telephone. Everyone here is a video participant, so please raise your hand if you'd like to speak at public comment. Okay, seeing no hands. Mr. Wells, you raise your hand raised?
I do, Madam Chair, but if there's anyone from the public, I'd let them go first.
I see no hands raised. You can use the raise hand function at the bottom of your screen if you would like to speak. Okay, seeing none, Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'll try to be brief. If you remember, last year was the first time I came for public comment, then this is the second time, and this is for the same purposes. We all know this is a holiday time of year where many people are in need. And last year, some of the volunteers and staff at my brother's keeper, which is in Easton, which services about 6,000 families and 14,000 individuals currently. One of the most important drives they do each year is bring Christmas into these homes across the region, including many homes in this community. Last year, we had a wonderful drive where we collected crockpots. It's actually home utensils and kitchen utensils are one of the number-one asks by mothers who want to support their kids. And we wanted to get 50 or 75 of Mrs. Collins and Mr. Dougherty, who happens to be on the phone, was a key participant in this. He didn't know I was going to mention it, and I didn't expect him to be here. We collected almost 150 crockpots last year for my brother's keeper, and every single one of them found their way to a home. So I've started this drive again at their request, and I'm grateful already to so many residents contacting people who dropped them at my front door already. This Sunday, December 5th, I'll be on the side of Town Hall at 11 o'clock. I'm exposed noon until 2 o'clock. If people would like to donate one, unwrapped, just drive up. They don't even have to get out of the car, take it out, and we will deliver them all directly. If they can't come on Sunday, they can email me, they can PM me, they can drop it on my front door, text me, whatever it is. Go on Facebook, I have a whole post created there forward under my name, Richard Wells. Staff and volunteers and all the people, especially from this town that I know that volunteer there, be essentially grateful. So thank you for allowing me that, and this is another wonderful endeavor for a great organization. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Okay, then seeing no other hands raised for public comment, why don't we go on to Item 4, which is a discussion with Mr. Dougherty, who's our CAC representative, that's the Massport Community Advisory Committee, relating to some data and information provided regarding the MIT study and runway for R. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Dougherty.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I can share my screen, I will put up the first sheet that shows the three updates that I will cover. How do I hit Share Screen? It covers the... Do you see that yet?
Yeah, Tom.
Yes?
No, not yet.
Okay, hold on a second.
Can you be of any help?
Should I do this first?
Sure.
We try that, and then do this. Let's do that. Is that good?
Okay, yes, Tom, we can now see it.
Good. So these are the three topics that I'd like to address. First is that on November 15, I received from MIT and its consultant HMMH the detailed pre-RNAV versus post-RNAV noise exposure data and comparisons that I had requested. It provides very, very much more detailed data regarding runway for our overflights and their noise exposure by location, by latitude and longitude. And as I'll explain, not merely by census block, but by a more than hundreds of items in a very granular manner. And I'll explain that, so it's very helpful. This provides an expertized, documented set of common facts that we can use to base analysis on. Second, I'll review MIT's path alternatives, the RNP path. Those are the three curved path alternatives. And based on the new data, a requested revision that I've requested of MIT to one of the MIT RNP models, and I'll go through that and why. Third, MIT is concluding its study after five years, but it's doing so without any relief for Milton, given Quincy, Braintree, and Hingham's objections to the flyable alternative paths, even as supplements used in rotation or otherwise, and even as used some percentage of the time that might reflect the percentage of the overflights pre-RNAV. Now, Milton's not alone in this inability of the MIT study to reach helpful conclusions for the runway 33L departure group. 33L is the runway that departs off to the northwest, and the towns there include, among others, Arlington, Belmont, Cambridge, Malden, Medford, Somerville, and others, and they are not going to get any relief because the FAA has really no agenda to essentially implement rotated dispersed paths, whether it's going to be on departure them or arrival us. So part of the problem is that cities and towns that benefited from the RNAV shift of flights from overflying their neighborhoods, and I'm going to show you some of that, you know, have no incentive to reshare overflight burdens. And, you know, it's now evident, and it's not a criticism, but the fact of the matter is, as constituted, the MCAC has no ability to influence sufficiently FAA's agenda, at least so far. So as I'll get to the next and last of these elements here, I do have, and I've submitted a draft to the Select Board, a proposed letter to the FAA. It's going to require the collective will of the federal, state, and municipal elected leaders to modify FAA's own efforts and priorities. So those are the topics. Let's see if I can then... Go to the next slide. Yep. Do you see this? A new slide?
Yes, we can, Tom.
Okay, thank you. All right, so now I know I'm in good shape. So this slide, hold on, I'll show you the beginning of it. You've seen this before. I asked for this slide, it more than a year ago, from Massport. They were nice enough to develop it, provide it. This is from October 2009. I picked that because it is a peak month, and it's pre-RNAV, and we'll see MIT's use of the same peak month for the next year, 2010, pre-RNAV. And it shows, you know, over here, as I'm pointing, the dispersion to the east of Milton of planes are going into 4R, and also planes coming down and then turning. It's very important as an image to show that there's there there, but the point is, with more disaggregated data, more detailed data, one can be more thorough in the analysis, and that's what I'm going to show you. And of course, that's pre-RNAV. Well, here's RNAV, as we know. And this slide, of course, was obtained in connection with the proposed 4L. RNAV, that's going to make bad situation worse. I've spent, we all did, months and hours and hours on the opposition, the comments to oppose this 4L. Indeed, this slide was prepared by FAA itself, and when they prepared it, they did not put 4R on it. So we had to go and say, come on, there's a 4R, these are companions, these are parallel tracks, et cetera, that are burdening Milton. All right, so next. Here we are. There are hundreds of pages now in this detailed sheet, and I'm going to just use this to take the top line there. This shows the latitude, the longitude, then it shows the number of flights, in this case, zero, above 60 decibels, which is, you know, for example, like a a air conditioning machine unit at 100 feet, an outside unit at 100 feet away. On a peak day, and they use the peak days, and I'll show you, in 2010 and then in 2017 to compare, and the change in population. Now, as I said, it's not a census block. That can have 400, on average, 250 to 550 people living there. This is down to such a detailed level at times. There's, yeah, there won't be zero people there, but there will be very few. So it's very detailed, it's very long. It starts, and the best way to analyze this, if you were to look at it, and I'm going to post this, is use the longitude, because it's a descending longitude. The accompanying latitude will vary. This is way up, it's the first page. It's up in Littleton, which is northwest of Concord, and it just simply says, look, for planes coming in at that high altitude, where they're going toward 4R, they didn't have any 60 or more by day and 50 by night level noise affecting these neighbors here. And just 30 seconds on this. We all know that the DNL, the day-night noise level metric that the FAA uses, is very much criticized because it takes the whole year. So if the planes are only flying, say, 18 to 24% of the time, you've got another 76% of the time at least where the planes are not coming in. It could be a very quiet day, and they're averaged in. That's not what the MIT study did. It's one of the benefits of the MIT study. They said, no, we're going to use a peak day, and we're going to use the number, and a peak meaning where it's a highly frequent flyer day, and you'll see so in a minute. And we're going to use the number above 60. Now, one of the issues is, the number of planes that are coming through that have 60 or more decibel levels could be 70. 70 decibels is twice as loud as 60. It's exponential. So in that sense, this is a threshold that has said, there's disturbance at 60 and above during the day. And let me go to the next slide, because this gives you essentially, and there are literally thousands of entries, or hundreds of entries at least. It takes a long time to just get through it. Let me go to the next one that's a little more applicable. Yeah. So now, if I can, it's a little hard to... Here we go. You see this one? Doesn't say it, but then I'll tell you in a minute how you can find it. This is the MBTA Butler stop. And before RNAV, 166 planes that were on a peak day over the over the N60 or above noise level, then down to 118, minus 48 in that respect. This is an example, as you know, the Butler is northeast of Milton, but the narrowing of the path, as I'll show you in a minute, leads even to the heavily used being less used, right? And it's shifting into the middle. And if we go down a little further on this same page, yeah. Am I going to get it right? Yes. This is Gun Hill Street going up towards Milton Hill, 355, 398, plus 43. So that in the concentrated area, there's an increase in the concentration. You'll see it additionally here. But this is an example of one of the pages where it shows you decrease and increase. And you'll see, on the east and west sides, outside of Milton, you'll see on those sides, even within, you'll see respectively some decreases. And then, as you get toward the middle, increases. And let's go to the next as a way to illustrate that. Oh, yeah, this is it. Have I blocked? Let me see. Can you see that?
Yes, we can see the top of your page, Tom.
Yeah, that's good. So that way, and I put my own image on there, so I can read it too. So, for example, if you have your home address, and you maybe have done this many times, but if you go to a website called latlong.net, you just put in your address, you know, 1 Beacon Street, Boston, Mass. 2108 would be a Boston address. It gives you the latitude and longitude. So then you put that number, the latitude number with a comma, then you put the longitude right after it with the minus whatever. Or you just take that latitude and longitude and go back to the charts that just show you, go down the longitude column and find the longitude and latitude near to your address. So this allows anyone, including those in Milton, but those also in neighboring municipalities, to be able to see the number of overflights, the change in the population effect. Here's three examples. This is near the Goddard School before, in 2010, on a peak day, 70 flights, then down to 44. So 26 fewer flights, 37% fewer. If you look, and here's, this is, you know, Gun Hill, let me go a little below that. South of that, as you're coming up, not far away, Pleasant Street and Bailey Ave, increased to 413, 15%, 54 more flights, over 60 decibels, right, and 50 at night. Think about that. These are in the sort of one every 55 seconds over your head during the day, as we know, at 4 o'clock in the afternoon, or those aspects of the day in which are heavily traffic. Over here, Pierce Street, East Milton Square. So where that, you know, for those, everyone must know it, but if you don't, you know, Mechanic Street is parallel to it, runs from Adams to Granite. This is to the east of Mechanic Street, where the planning board is looking at a development. There, there's about a 25% reduction. Now, if you were to go further over to the east on Adams Street, as you go, you get to West Quincy, of course, you're getting these in equivalent or higher negative percentages, right, and decreases in flights after RNAV. And that goes all the way up, and I want to show you, if you start going north. So let's hear. So this is, you know, fairly far up, above East Milton, Newport Ave, where there's very little population, in fact, almost none recorded there, and 28% reduction in flights, notwithstanding the fact that it's, you know, it's up there, but because of the narrowing of the path as it goes, that's a reduction. Similarly, Botolph, which is in between, and there's Wilson, which is essentially near the, one of the big wooded area, and that's also reduced. So this is a way of just sort of looking at those numbers, plugging them in, and understanding the narrowing of the path and the shift of flights, I'll call it westward, as far as Milton is concerned, as it relates to our neighboring Quincy and Braintree and the 4R. So let me go... Next. The next topic, then, is to look at the MIT's RNP path alternatives in one of the revisions I've asked them to make in terms of their illustration and their model. I made that request immediately upon or promptly after reading these materials. You make the request, or I did, the protocol is you make it through Massport. They said, well, you know, MIT is trying to conclude its study. It may not do that, we hear you, we'll pass this along, but, you know, it is what it is. I reiterated that their expertise and their modeling is, their expertise is, you know, unmatched. Their modeling is five years of work, and consequently, they would be, in both respects, very well situated to do it if they will. Let me go to the next then, and talk about this. So this is the path, and there are three of them. This is the path, the RNP path, that is, you know, to the east of Milton, and it is one that they said is flyable, and it has this 24-degree turn to final. As we're going to see, that 24 degree isn't going to be sufficient. Now, an RNP path can be, its flexibility, as we'll see in a second, allows a further degree of turn to final. So what I've asked them to do is to make sure that it doesn't touch Milton, as we'll see in a moment, that new data suggests that that is the case in one respect. But this is the flyable path as presently modeled, and as you know, here's the second flyable path. Now, I call this, they talk about a four-mile initial offset, that's this. And obviously, there's something in between this and the one I just showed you that I'm asking them to remodel and look at based on what I'll come to. This I would, you know, call over Howe's Neck, and then over. The prior one, and I'll come back to it in a moment, has the advantage, from the point of view of equity, that it is more restorative of prior noise burden. Because the fact of the matter is, that's where, as we saw from the very first blue slide and later, that's where the planes were, and that's what the comparison 2010 to 2017 shows. But this is another flyable path. That's not one that I suggest any change to. The next is even further, it's over Hingham and over Water, then turning. And similarly, this is flyable, and we've supported that. Hingham has opposed it. The other one that I previously just showed, Quincy opposed it. I'm sure that Quincy, Braintree, and Hingham, or whatever, will oppose any and all modeling refinements should we get it. But I believe that this data provides both the common basis to say, this is where the exposure was before, and also provides the basis to be able to model accurately the, you know, the RNP to the east of Milton without further impacting them. Next. Here again is the one that I've asked them to, based on this data, to remodel. When I had previously asked for the data and the analysis, they did provide the altitude, and that's helpful, but now, not what we want with regard to this data, the refinement I've talked about. So those are all the, and that's that 24 degrees. So it may have to be, it could be 30, I don't, it could be all the way up to 45. Whatever works, given the fact that, as you saw, the curved paths had an ability to work. It has to be a so-called within RNP requirements, and they're expert at that. Let's go further. Here's their slide, and this is why, right there, for the first time, you can see, you see that very high purple? It goes across... It nicked, it goes across, so I'll call it the northeast corner above East Milton, not East Milton. Now, it's, it's, it's upper, higher than that. Now, what this slide is showing is that all in here, if this were the, which I'm pointing to, were the RNP track or the RNP noise envelope, that actually, the other parts of Milton would all benefit, but part of Milton would not, right there. And we're not into that. We're not about trying to take the existing RNAV and somehow or other advocate that the new 4L proposed RNAV should go forward and further burden Milton in that way. And we don't want to inadvertently or inadvertently burden Milton up in that corner. So this would, this would need to come over here in terms of the envelope, which you now can see. Now, yes, you can see that in the blue, there's quite a lot of benefit to getting something like this working well. And it's, it's, it's just needs, now that we have all this detailed data, that needs, it needs that kind of work. Let me see. Oh, let me go up, hold on. Yeah. So going back, okay? So this is there, this is the slide they gave in connection with this, that last slide I showed you. And they said, well, look, and originally, we looked at this, 2010 to 2015, and we said, look, there's, there's concentration, 2010, it looks like there's not much concentration coming downwind, but then there's concentration going back up. And in 2015, there became concentration in both respects. Well, they've moved, you know, they've moved beyond that because they've actually shown now, and I'll slow down. Here's the runway for our change in N60, peak day 2010 to peak day 2017. So here we go. They're showing that coming downwind, and then turning, obviously, there is an increase of about, say, as many as change in planes up to, up to somewhere maybe 30 or 40 planes on a peak day in this area. Now, coming around, you'll see that the concentration actually relieved, these are the blues, it's not a lot of relief, but it's some relief here. The very place I just talked about, in the northern, northeast tip of, I'll call it East Milton's north, northeast Milton, that actually has a little bit of relief from the existing RNAV. Not from the, not from that RNP if it were to, you know, if it were not to be remodeled. And then in this area, there's, it's already high, but it gets even a little higher as you get in that part of Milton, by up to another, you know, say, 30 planes in a peak day. And then in this area here, as we just saw, yes, there's a change, but it's, it's down in, it's down in a, you know, in the teens or below, where it's already very high. So, and there's the peak days. And I looked at the weather and I looked at the wind on those days. These are good days for, for, you know, representative, as far as I, as an amateur can tell, and they as an expert pick them. And this therefore is a pretty good indication of, of a, you know, shift in concentration. And then they also point out that there are some bigger, there are some bigger planes and more smaller planes that has some effect on the noise. At some point, you'll therefore, if you're talking about the number of planes per day, and in some respects, there are fewer of a certain kind, that does affect the raw number, and they try to adjust for that. And that then is the, here is the slide I showed before that does show this issue, which I said to them is, look, these, the point here is restoration, dispersion, using these in alternative modality as supplemental, but not to further burden Milton, which is already burdened. So where we are, we see, I'm almost done. Here it is. I do have a draft letter. Is that visible?
Yes.
Yes, it is, Tom.
Thank you. And I'm gonna just take a minute with this. There's a couple of aspects to it, but what this is aimed at doing is addressing to FAA itself in light of where we are and where we aren't, in terms of the MCAC study. They demand that FAA take some, take some action. And I'm just gonna read through it if I may. From the outset of the FAA's implementation of the runway for our concentrated RNAV arrival path over the town of Milton, our residents, the Select Board, Congressman Lynch, and our state legislators have been asking the FAA to provide relief to Milton residents who've been uniquely overburdened by the concentrated 4R track. The RNAV study commissioned by Mass Board after five years' effort has led to no solution for Milton residents. We were led to believe that the goal of the study was to find and implement ways to supplement the 4R procedure and thereby address the negative aspects of this RNAV's concentration through dispersion. The pre-RNAV procedures and operations shared over flight burdens with other municipalities' neighborhoods, Quincy and Braintree in particular, in ways into a degree that were far more equitable than the 4R RNAV air traffic controller's pre-RNAV directed flights, in a way that no single community, Milton, was subject to such disproportional impacts as the RNAV composes. The MIT block two alternatives identified three potentially flyable RNP paths, but each was subjected to by Quincy, Braintree, and/or Hingham. And all were identified as requiring analyses of merger. That's how the one RNP would merge into the existing path. Furthermore, MIT, Mass Board recently provided Milton with noise exposure data indicating that MIT's illustrated 24-degree, three nautical mile intercept RNP path would actually increase noise impacts over neighborhoods in the north section of East Milton. Because of this, we do not support that illustrated RNP path. We've asked MIT to remodel that path such that its noise contour does not affect Milton, so that when this study concludes, and that's the point, yes, the study's concluding, but we do want to have such a third path in order to discuss that with neighboring municipal, state, and federal elected officials as a supplemental path to relieve Milton's RNAV burdens. I'm almost done. Although the current RNAV study may be concluded, we demand that FAA address Milton's unique concentrated overflight burdens in ways it has not done. FAA's proposed runway 4L arrival RNAV procedure would further uniquely burden Milton with concentrated overflight noise. Missing from the MOU process is engagement of FAA itself and air traffic control and airline representatives with the communities. We just stop there. It's always been reported to us, and as it says here, MIT has reported its interactions with those communities, and God bless them. But that process over five years has just led to pushback, not progress. MIT goes out, it talks, interacts, comes back, and it's been refused. Dispersion via rotation of arrival path procedures that restore equitable burden sharing across the pre-RNAV regions are goal. We demand that FAA engage in such an effort and also apply its flight design and next-gen expertise to develop feasible alternatives, including through the use of ATC, Control and Advanced Navigation Cockpit-to-Cockpit technology and training to enable feasible dispersion alternatives. MIT said, this was Mr. Hansman said, look, in order to be able to do what you're asking and to do it with a degree of flexibility and manpower, while not increasing the FAA's desire to keep air traffic control staffing at some level like present, you're gonna need this, this technology of cockpit-to-cockpit, plane-to-plane, sort of GPS-based coordination that's already built, that's built in, not simply like a car going down the street and knowing where it is, but each of those cockpits would know where each of the others is electronically. And Mr. Hansman said that that could, Dr. Hansman said that could take five to 10 years under the present FAA priorities. MITOR Corporation has said it could be done in three years. That's why we want this, prolonging my explanation, but that's why we really want this technology to become a priority. Those alternatives must focus on decreasing the negative impacts of flight path concentration through greater path variability, rotation of paths, and/or dispersion. This, this section right here, I'm gonna try to make sure that when that December 9 meeting happens, at which MIT is gonna say, we are concluding our study, and sort of present what it has and what it doesn't have with respect to 33L or 4R. It does have a couple of proposals with respect to some departures that go over water and don't go near hull, and they want them less near hull, but it's over fish, not people, so it's rather easy to do. And that's what they're gonna be recommending. But I want all of this right here addressed at that meeting, perhaps by means of a motion that says that, look, FAA really needs to engage and apply flight design and next-gen expertise to develop these kinds of alternatives and use that kind of technology, and see if that can get support at that meeting. Lastly, it says we will follow up and ask Congressman Lynch, who's been so helpful, and Senator Marky Warren, and our state legislators to support this. So that is my, that's my update. I'll stop there.
Hey, thank you very much, Mr. Doherty. That was very comprehensive and very helpful. Does anyone on the board have any questions or comments? And if not, we've all seen a draft of this letter that Mr. Doherty had provided to us. And we do have a number of CCs on the letter. I did, I think, Arthur, you sent me an email about whether we should have additional CCs. So we may want to talk about that, the saving of the state, I think it was the state delegation.
Yes, they referenced twice in the letter, and I thought it only appropriate to include our state legislators. And wondered also if we shouldn't include the executive authority of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the governor and selves.
That sounds okay to me, unless anyone has a comment. I see Mr. Zulus has his hand raised. Did you want to address that point, Mr. Zulus?
No, not that point, Madam Chair. I agree with that.
Okay, Mr. Zulus?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a, just a point that I've been, I was made aware of. We should, in the last paragraph, when we talk about our asks, we should reference Congresswoman Presley as well, who represents some areas of the town. So she should be included along with Congressman Lynch in that last paragraph, last sentence really, and then CC'd as well.
That's a good point. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Wells?
I'd make, I'd make a motion to support this letter and to include the edits suggested by both Mr. Doyle and Mr. Zulus.
I'll second.
Okay. Do we have any discussion on the motion, which is to support and I think to sign and issue the letter to the FAA?
I'd accept those, I'd accept that, those terms as a sign in it that is a friendly amendment. It actually sounds better than what I said. That's what I meant.
That's, I thought, I was just restating and clarifying what I thought your motion was. Okay, then do we have, if there's no discussion and I see no hands raised, then...
Just one question, Madam Chair. Is there timeliness when I'm signing this? Do we need to send this by tomorrow?
Let's see, it's dated as of today. So there is some time sensitivity that I think, because the next MCAC meeting is December 9. So I think if we can get this signed in the next day or so, I hope that would be helpful.
That's why I asked. Okay, very good. Thank you, Madam Chair.
We could, we could use our electronic signatures. They've, we've had a little problem with the quality of them. Why don't we try it and see if we can get it a little bit clearer than we've had it on some letters recently? And if not, we could ask everyone to stop into the office to sign. Okay, then, all in favor of the motion to submit the letter? Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, is there anything else on this topic for Mr. Doherty this evening? Or anything else you'd like to add, Tom?
No, I, that, thank you very much. I appreciate your support of this letter, and I think that it's very important. And I really appreciate your taking the time out to do it as expeditiously as you have.
Okay, all right.
Tom, I just want to add my appreciation of your use of the word "demand" in the letter.
I, I, thank you. I think it's appropriate at this time.
Yes. Okay, well then, Mr. Doherty, thank you very much for all of your efforts on this and your ongoing work at the MCAC. We appreciate it. And it was good to get this data and to be able to put this information together. And thank you for drafting the letter.
Yeah, thank you all. And you can go on to, you know, latlong.net and see any and all of the respective locations. Thanks a lot. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. Okay, it is now 7:42. I think, in the interest of time, we should probably, if it's okay with the board, I see that our town corp is here, but if we could move item six up and just discuss A and B, which are two articles relating to a land swap at Guile Road and Blue Hills Parkway. So that Mr. Zulus, who's our representative on the school building committee, and Mr. Freitag can take part in the conversation. We will then come back to item five, which is Susan Galvin and the precincting. I am going to be recused on items six A and B because this relates to a building project that would ultimately be bonded. So I've asked Mr. Doyle if he would be the acting chair for this item. And we should, I think we have Mr. O'Rourke in the attendee group, Mr. Dennehy, if we could look him up. And then I will come back when the discussion is over. Thank you, Arthur.
You're welcome, Madam Chair. Mr. Zulus, may we turn to you for an introduction to this topic, please?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So the first proposed article would, would be what has been referred to colloquially as the land swap. This would be a swap, which I think we've seen a presentation from Mr. O'Rourke on, of existing conservation land, which is adjacent to land that is for active recreation, although not used currently for any recreation. It is, it is land that is behind Brooksfield. And the reason for the proposed land swap is that the land that is currently conservation land would be a better site for a school, as opposed to the adjacent, the adjacent land, which is not currently conservation. So the idea is really to flip it, so we can use the land that would be better for a school. And Mr. O'Rourke can go into that a little bit more clearly. The, and, and related to that would be a second article, which would change the use of the town on land from the active recreation, so it could be used for a school. So the question is whether, whether we're going to, whether the Select Board will submit these articles for the special town meeting in February. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. O'Rourke, the chair of the school building committee, and Mr. Freitag as well, as we tease through what needs to be done and whether it, whether it can and should be done with respect to submitting articles for town meeting in February.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Mr. O'Rourke, can we turn to you, please, Mr. O'Rourke?
Yeah. Thank you for the audience tonight and, you know, helping us with this article. As Town Council can attest to, I've been pestering him since we've kind of identified this land in the early spring. If I may, can I share my screen just to kind of, I think, a picture where it helps? And just let me know when you can see it.
Have it.
Perfect. So what you're looking at here, the other two parcels that we've identified, they're kind of the basis of these articles. As Mr. Zulus mentioned, the parcel shown in green right now is one that's listed as conservation land. The parcel shown in red is one used as active recreation. There's an unrecorded land swap that is in the process of being recorded. We worked with BSC Group, I believe you guys executed the contract on that one of your last meetings. So that, we're on their schedule to get out there and start re-survey this land. So essentially, to walk through and, and, uh, Mr. Frytag, feel free to interrupt if I go off base. But what our plan would be to do is to take the parcel that's, that consists of the area north of Guile Road and subdivide that and use that subdivided parcel to swap with the parcel that's south of Guile Road. So it's, it's a little tricky. It's not taking the entire parcels and swapping them. It's a portion of them. So there's additional survey that we're having, BSC Group is doing as part of that. This is all part of, uh, item six A that we're talking about right now. And then once that swap is completed, that would basically be the gen, the complete portion of what article six, item six A on the agenda would be. And then item six B that Mike was referring to is taking that parcel that gets swapped over and changing the use of that so that we can construct the school on it afterwards, so.
Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. Are there any questions for Sean, for many members of the board, before we turn to Mr. Frytag? If being none, Kevin, can you join us and...
Vice Chair, or Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just, just, and I ask you this, just a point of expertise to you. You sit on the ConCon as well. From a ConCon perspective, do you think this is something that would be doable?
I have to defer that, in all honesty, uh, Mr. Wells to Mr. Cannon.
I got it. I got it. No, it's fine. He said that, I shouldn't even add. That's, that's fine.
And, and I think, uh, Mr. Frytag may have some comment on that, although I'm not sure. So let's, let's bring that to Kevin, if that's all right with you.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Good, thank you. But a good question to have raised. Thank you for doing so.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Doyle. Again, this is Kevin Frytag, in the office of Town Council. Mr. O'Rourke did a, a great job just now. I think that the, the visual aids are really, really helpful here. There are two parts to this, and there's some overlap between the two. The first is a home rule petition, which is necessary in order for any land that is currently held by the town as conservation land and is under the protections of Article ninety-seven to the Massachusetts Constitution, needs to go through the legislature in order to be used for anything other than conservation purposes. So there's that piece. That's the first part that's covered by the article that's sort of being addressed in six-point A of your agenda. The second article overlaps with that because the land was given, was purchased by the town to be used in part for, or excuse me, given to the town to be used in part for conservation and for recreation, active recreation. So those are designated uses right now that exist as restrictions, if you will, on those properties. In order for them to be used for something else, the town needs to act by two-thirds vote at town meeting to make that change. So those are the, the two pieces here. As I said, there's some overlap between the two. Both are necessary, in my, my opinion, in order to get us to a point where the town could permit a, a, a portion of the property to be used to build a new school.
And, um, Mr. Zulus, who had his face, please?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. And I, and I would add that what Kevin pointed out, the, the need for home rule petition and a subsequent two-thirds vote of, two-thirds vote on the use, that is the reason for the time sensitivity and, and the desire, if possible, to bring this to town meeting in February. If, if we don't do it in February, it could wait to May, until May. But then that's, you know, two or two, two months and some lost. And given the overcrowding in the schools, which is, which has been exacerbated this fall and, and, and the needs of the schools and the, and the, and the timing in order to move a project forward like this, which will take several years, that's the reason that school, the school building committee would like to, if possible, move forward in February because all of these things are going to take time. And, um, we need to, we need to do our best, in view of the sound, school building committee, we need to do our best to try to bring some relief to our schools. And so that's the reason that, if possible, we'd like to move forward. One thing, my understanding is that Town Council would like to be authorized to discuss this with the Attorney General's Office and with the state agencies that need to be, that need to be consulted with for this kind of land swap. So that's not, that's number one. So he'd want this board to authorize him to do that, to engage in those discussions. And two, we don't have a draft or draft articles in front of us. But I, I think Town Council would be looking for the will of the board on whether he should go ahead and draft those articles for approval at our next meeting, given that, given that, given that, you know, December second is our deadline. And so presumably, we'd try to get those articles in by that date to be voted next week. So those are the, those are the, I think, the steps, and that's the time, time sensitivity. Thank you, Mr. Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Just for clarification, the primary purpose of this item number six on our agenda this evening is to move this to a town meeting with the caveats and the questions that have been placed on the table. Is that correct?
Thank you to you, Michael.
Yeah, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Excellent. Any discussion? Richard?
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So Kevin, you comfortable to be able to have this ready in two days? December second is the day after tomorrow.
Yeah, I, I think that might be, um, I think I can have a draft article to you by the second. Again, I, I would just point out that there, there is going to be, let me step back. If, if the board votes to do this, put these articles on, I would take that as sort of the, as Mr. Zulus just suggested, sort of the, the, the direction to reach out to the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act office as well as the Attorney General's Office to, to engage them to see what needs to be done here in terms of moving this property out of Article ninety-seven protections. Because they're, they're involved. They're sort of an oversight committee that advises the legislature on these types of points. So it's, it's necessary to get their buy-in, so to speak, as soon as possible. If the board decides to do both those things, I, I will endeavor to get the, the article to you as soon as possible. I, quite candidly, I'm, I'm on trial right now in the land court, and I expect, I've been on trial the last two days. I'll be on trial the, the next two days as well. So Tuesday night is, is going to be very tight if, if it's possible to do it by your next meeting. That, that would provide a little bit more time. But I'll, I'll defer to the board on, on what you think you need.
Second, my second point on that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wells?
I'm sorry, just, sorry, I'm, I apologize. So my second point is, so if we do do this, we're going to, if we can do this, we're going to have an article for home rule petition in February, correct? Mike, Mike Zulus, am I correct in that? Yes. And then from there, it would go to the legislature, where I believe it also needs a two-thirds vote? I remember back to, we were trying to make the change in the square on the deck for parking. It was a two-thirds and two-thirds, if I, if I'm correct.
That's my memory as well, Richard.
Yeah, okay. All right, I just, my only concern for you, Michael, and for Mr. O'Rourke, and I don't want to waste his time. I just don't want to see us have to rush this, and then we get to February and twenty questions that get sent back for studying. Rather, if we're going to do it, let's go, let's do it right and draw all our i's and cross our t's. All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I'll say.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Ms. Collins, before I go to you, just to Mr. Frytag, with respect to your mention of the next select board meeting, the next meeting is December two, and it is then followed by a select board meeting on December eight. Just so that we have those two calendar dates in mind. Ms. Collins, you were next, followed by Mr. Zulus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Pro Tem. I don't remember the date to go to the printer. And it may be that we have a little, a little room for Mr. Frytag to at least refine, e- even if, even if you are able to get something in a second. But, but I, I would think that there's some room there, since we're meeting on the eighth. Mr. Dennehy or, or Ms. De Napoli, do you know the date that we're? I mean, I realize that this also needs to go to the warrant committee. But I, I was just wondering if we push the warrant, if we, if we, depending upon when it has to go to the printer, because it's a small warrant, maybe the warrant committee has a little room, I guess, is what I was wondering.
It was, that, thank you, Ms. Collins, for the question. I just pulled the calendar up here. Select Board approved the warrant, warrant to the printer on January twenty-eighth. Understanding that it has to be in the homes on the fourteenth and, you know, to the post office by the ninth of February. So twenty-eighth would be the, the, the drop dead last day.
Does that help, Ms. Collins? Are you all set?
I, I'm, I'm not sure. I guess I'm just wondering, you know, if we, if we could give Mr. Frytag a little extra time, if it's needed. I, I don't know. Maybe Mr. Zulus has something to add.
We'll turn to Mr. Zulus.
Not on that. You know, you know, my hope is that, you know, sometimes we have a little flexibility on the dates for accepting articles. And, you know, in, in this case, since our, our Town Council is, is tied up on trial, maybe that would allow us to give them a little flexibility, you know, until our meeting next week in order to get these. In, in, in terms of Richard's point, and I think it's a good one, you know, do we want to make sure that we have a fully baked, fully baked articles for town meeting? Absolutely, Richard, absolutely. But I think it's the, the will of the school building committee. And I see Betty White on the school building, but I don't know if she wants to be promoted as well. But, but I, I think it's the will of the, the school building committee because of the time sensitivity to really do our very best. And if, and if it doesn't work out, we can't do it because of scheduling with the, with the Attorney General's Office and MIPA. If it, if, if we don't get there because of those reasons, well, at least we've tried, and at least we've done our best. And, and, and if, and if it doesn't, and, and at least we'll be, then we'll be ready for May, right? And if we have questions in, in February that come up, then we'll, then we'll be ready for May to answer those questions if they're not answered. So I, 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 I guess I'd, 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 I think the worst-case scenario is, is it gets pushed off till May, and then there are questions that come up, and then it gets pushed off another six months. And then we're further behind. So, so, yeah, I, I know you did. I, I just, I just wanted to, to, to point it out. So I, so I, so I think that's, that's, the, the committee really wants to, wants to try to see if we can do this.
Mr. Zulus, when you referenced, um, select board meeting next week, were you referencing the December eight meeting?
That's right. That's right.
Thank you. Like clarification. Mr. Wells?
So, so, to, to both your points, I'd, I'd be much more comfortable in, this really, I don't, I don't think we're giving Town Council a lot, but I'd, I'd be far more comfortable not hearing anything until next week. I think if, Kevin, I think you might be more comfortable. We gave it till the eighth, and then I think, I think tonight, maybe to Mr. Zeus, we could vote to support them. We don't need to see anything until the eighth. Would that be acceptable to everyone?
If, if, if I may, Mr. Vice?
Mr. Zulus?
I, I think that, I think that's what Kevin is looking for in terms of his authority. If we vote to support moving forward with these articles, that will give him the instruction to draft them as quickly and as best as can and as best he can. And also to begin reaching out to MIPA and the Attorney General's Office. Kevin, I spoke for you, but I think that's what you're looking for. And if we have a, a vote to, to move forward with these articles at this point, I think that'll give you what you need. Is that, is that fair?
I'm making a motion to move forward with these articles right now.
Motion's been made. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Second, Ms. Collins? Any discussion? Seeing none, I will do a roll on the motion. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Motion is passed. Mr. Frytag, do you have now what you need in order to be prepared for the December eight meeting?
Yes, thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Well, then welcome, will the Vice Crown, Crownland, back to our meeting.
Thank you very much, Mr. Doyle. I appreciate your cheering this item. Okay, I think we should go back to item five, which is the congressional and state representative legislative districts in our town clerk. Susan Galvin has been waiting, and then we'll come back to the town meeting articles, which may be quite short. So, um, I'll just introduce it while we're moving Susan Galvin over to a panelist. This board previously voted for some new precinct lines to be drawn at a meeting a few weeks ago. And since then, we've been informed, we, we had initially thought there would not be any changes to the congressional and state representative legislative districts. That's what the town had been told. And now the information is that there will be some changes. And the best person to address this and update us would be our town clerk, Susan Galvin. Susan, thank you for waiting, and thank you for coming in this evening.
Oh, thank you for having me. So in previous years, re-precincting was completed by the cities and towns by June the year following the federal census. The state legislature created new legislative districts after the brief precincting process was complete, using precincts as building blocks for new state representatives, state senator, governor council, and congressional districts. Well, due to the pandemic, the 2020 census data was not released to towns until about October. That meant that city and towns were redrawing precinct lines at the same time that the legislature was working on new districts. So the Governor Baker has signed into law the legislative districts. Therefore, the only alternative for Milton at this time would be for us to revisit what was just recently approved by the select board of our precinct boundaries. Let me backtrack a little bit. So based on the congressional and representative lines, the major changes would occur in, for congressional. Currently, our precinct breakdown is precincts one, five, and ten are in the seventh district, which is Ayanna Pressley's district. Under the new precinct breakdown, precincts one would continue in there, five and ten as well. But in addition, precinct two and four A, or part of precinct four, I should say, would fall under the seventh district. Precinct, the eighth congressional district, which is represented by Stephen Lynch, currently has precincts two, three, four, six, seven, eight, and nine. Under the new breakdown, it would be precinct three, the other half of precinct four, precinct six, seven, eight, and nine. So essentially, the seventh district would be gaining precinct two and half of precinct four. And the eighth district would be losing precinct two and half of precinct four. So that's on the congressional level. In the twelfth Suffolk of the House of Representatives, which is Brandy Fookler Oakley's district, current breakdown is precincts one and two. Under the new legislative lines, that district would gain half of precinct four as well. And the seventh Norfolk, which is Representative Driscoll's area, would be losing half of precinct four. So basically, precinct four is going to be a split precinct. Milton is not the only town that this is occurring in. And it causes a multitude of problems. It's not an ideal situation for us. People in the same neighborhood would not get to vote for the same represent, representative. People in the same neighborhood would not get to vote for the same represent, representatives. Not, it will disable voters within that same community of precinct four. It's going to cause confusion to the voters to understand who their elected representatives are. In one sense, it could decrease precinct strength. On the alternative, it could increase it because you would have two, um, two forces working for it. It does present the opportunity to disenfranchise voters. Um, it's going to cost more money to run elections. It is going to be administratively more difficult to navigate. It's going to require multiple ballots in that one precinct. And it's going to cause logistical challenges. Like I said, we have, let me step back a second. So currently, Milton has already been operating under a legislative split between the, the House, the seventh Norfolk, and the twelfth Suffolk, and in the congressional, the seventh and eighth. With ten precincts, the town has done its job as far as drawing our lines, meeting our goals, and meeting the population of the five percent of having each precinct within a tw- the two thousand eight hundred and sixty goal. But with the new maps of the congressional and house, we do have that s- split. It's, I'm still reviewing the possibilities. As it appears right now, it would be, it would not be an easy fix to make that, that precinct so it wouldn't be split. So keep it in mind that if we make changes to one precinct, there's a cascading effect on the entire mark map. So therefore, if we make changes in one precinct, it will ripple, and therefore, the possibility of changing to minimize the effect of a split precinct could in fact change the entire precincting divisions. And that's not to say that we still wouldn't come out with a split precinct in either four or one of the other precincts. So, that, that's basically where we're at right now. I'd love to hear your impressions, and, um, if there are questions, answer any questions that you may have.
Uh, thank you very much, Town Clerk Susan Galvin. So, um, the, one of the reasons we put this on the agenda is we wanted the town to hear this information, make sure that it was fully transparent for the residents to know that these changes that we had initially been told, um, there would be no changes, we now have changes. Uh, we have, um, a split of precinct four, but also precinct two moving from, um, one district to another at both the, um, or at the congressional level, um, not at the state level, if I was correct. I had so many conversations with Susan about this, I don't want to mix it up. So, this is an opportunity for our board to have a discussion. Uh, we do have the redistricting committee that the moderator appointed and that worked with the town clerk to draw the precinct lines. One question maybe, should, should the town clerk ask that group to reconvene and consider whether we should entertain redrawing some of these lines to try to make precinct four whole so that it's in, even if it's a redrawn precinct four, that it's in one district for the senate, uh, for the state rep seat, and also for the legislative seat, um, as opposed to two. So those are some of the issues that we wanted to bring up for the, um, board to discuss and give some thoughts to the town clerk on. And we, I, I should also mention that the governor has already signed the legislation, uh, drawing these congressional and state representative lines. So, um, as far as the legislature is concerned, this is now in final form. The only question is, as Susan said, communities that have split precincts have an opportunity until the fifteenth of December to go back and consider redrawing precinct lines and resubmitting to the state. So the question is, given the short timing, um, do we, what, what is the board's thoughts? And, and does anyone have comments or suggestions or questions for Susan Galvin? Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, Madam Clerk. So, I just want to, I, I have two. Did I hear correctly, this, there's precedent for this in other communities or in this community? I don't remember in this community.
Yes, so, um, it, it is happening statewide because of this, the switch up of how the lines were drawn. Typically, it is that the towns and cities make their, um, precincts, and then the legislative build off of those. Because it wasn't done that way, there are many towns, um, I'm hearing in the hundreds, that are going to have, um, split precincts.
So my second question is, given this, in, in to the point that you said, like, you live in a neighborhood that has been like a precinct with unified representation forever, does this possibly, and I could be walking down a path that's unknown or untested right now, could this lead to some type of litigation or multiple litigations by individual communities because of this?
Well, I mean, I think it is something that the town should consider. Um, I, I do believe by splitting a precinct, w- we are disenfranchising our voters and causing great confusion. I do know that, um, the town of Randolph is considering it. That's the only one that I'm aware of at this time. But there may be other communities that I'm not aware of.
I mean, hypothetically, you, you and I could live in the same street. You live across the street from directly, and you are in one and I'm in another.
Correct.
How does that help the commonality of our neighborhood? That's just, that's why it just seems to be in this society.
Correct.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, both of you, for your recognition.
I, I will also say that I do know that, um, Secretary of State Galvin, um, was not pleased with this, um, division.
True.
And he has publicly stated that.
Uh, Ms. Collins has her hand raised.
Hmm, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Ms. Galvin, did I hear correctly, you said that you've been looking at how we might remedy this, but there isn't really something that seems to, at this point, work better than, than this imperfect, um, plan that we've been handed?
C- correct. So, you know, initially, I was looking to see if there was a way, the bordering precincts, which are, um, precincts two and, oh, I believe it is two and, one, to see if we could absorb some of the numbers in those. But the, the numbers are, are greater than, um, what those precincts can absorb. So that would be a logical, easy fix. So that is not on the table. That cannot be done, um, based on our numbers. Hence, it would cause the rippling effect of, once you touch one precinct, it ha- will affect all of the precincts. So, and ultimately, we still may have a split, when it's all said and done, despite best efforts of trying to make precinct four whole, we may end up making another precinct a split. And that, that would have to be investigated to see if in fact that is the case.
So I beg for the boards, and then I'll go to Mr. Dennehy in a moment. I think the, for the board's, um, discussion this evening, we probably want to ma- perhaps weigh in and give Susan Galvin some thoughts on whether it might make sense to reconvene that redistricting committee on fairly short notice and see whether they want to meet and have a discussion, since they initially drew the, along with the town clerk, with, drew the initial lines for the precincts that we voted to approve. Um, it, that committee may want to know what the latest developments from the state have been, and, you know, in fairness to the members who did some of the work on it, give them an opportunity to meet again, see if there's any creative ideas that make them out of that process. I think we could, I, I ask that Mr. Frytag be here to listen at least to this dialogue this evening. And Kevin, I know you're in the middle of a trial, uh, very busy week for you, and I, I think what we may want to explore with you or with someone in your office is, um, is there any scuttlebutt or any news from other communities that you might represent, or other communities that are facing a same situation? The clerk, I think, has really identified precinct four and the, the administrative burden and the extra cost, and the potential for confusion and for human error taking place, um, at a precinct where you have multiple ballots. That's one issue. Um, another issue is the fact that the congressional district is not being further diluted between two districts. Used to be many, a couple of decades ago, or maybe three decades ago, I'm not sure whether it was twenty or thirty years ago, when the town was initially all in one congressional district, and then a couple precincts were pulled out as a result of one of the census changes and put into a, another district. Now we're going further in the direction of having almost co-equal, I think, uh, we had almost equal, um, four and a half and five and a half precincts in each of the two congressional districts. So i- it may make sense to have a further discussion with town council, give him an opportunity to see what some of his colleagues might be finding in other communities that are encountering a similar splitting of a precinct, what the options might be, and what the feasible and realistic options might be. Um, and then having a follow-up discussion on our December eighth meeting is, is one option for the board. So, Mr. Dennehy, we'll go to you next. Did you have your hand raised?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Would, would it be helpful if I shared my screen to just show the viewing audience what, what the proposed splitting of precinct four would look like? I know the clerk has spent a lot of work on this, um, just, just for the viewing, okay, great. And clerk, feel, feel free to describe what, what people are seeing here on the screen. But, um, essentially, um, precinct four would be cut in half. Um, coming up Blue Hills Parkway, taking, taking a right onto Warren Avenue. So if, if you're coming up Warren Ave from the Parkway, the right-hand side of Warren Ave would be precinct four B, the left-hand side would be four A, and that continues on to Thatcher Street, at which point the right-hand side of Thatcher Street, uh, remains in four B, and the left-hand side remains in four A, and it continues with the left and right four A, four B, uh, on Lincoln Street as well.
That was a very good explanation. Thank you, Mr. Dennehy.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dennehy. Um, Mr. Wells?
So here's a hundred dollar question. So for the purposes of town meeting, do we now have town meeting members for precinct four A and precinct four B?
So, there was back in, um, and I don't know the years, but, but the town had a five A and a five B, so essentially eleven precincts, because precinct five was so big. And for town meeting, they still were all precinct five town meeting members. Um, so essentially, the, the residents in, let's use our scenario now, for, for A and for B would be voting for the exact same membership. Um, so there, that wouldn't be split, that for A, people would run and then for B. It's still a whole precinct in terms of for the town and town meeting. It's just for voting purposes, they would vote as separate and have different representation in the congressional level and on the state representative level.
So I think just, just maybe to sum up what the town clerk said, if, if you live on one side of Warren Avenue, you'd be voting for the same slate of candidates for town meeting member as your neighbor across the street in Warren Avenue, but your state rep candidate and your congressional candidate would be different.
Correct.
In the state election.
Correct. And then in terms of, um, and again, I would have to, evaluate it, but basically, going in, what an election would look like is we would break down those two precincts, um, for the voter. So essentially, those people that would come in for precinct four, we would have a check-in table for the four A, check-in table for the four B. We would need to have somebody there who is able to direct people, um, according to their street as to which precinct they would vote in. They, they would get the ballots for four A, the four B people would get the ballots for four B. There'd be a separate checkout area and separate voting machine.
Wow. That's a lot of work.
And, you know, more importantly than the, um, administrative work, is the voters, you know, the confusion for them. Um, so it will require an awful lot of education to the voters. Um, and we're required, but of course, regardless of whether we were required, letters would be going out to inform them of, you know, what is happening with their precincts.
Mr. Wells, did you have something further? Your hand is still raised.
I apologize, Madam Chair, I forgot to, or I could, it's not showing up right tonight on my screen, it's faded.
Thank you. Ms. Collins?
You did. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I- in, in response to your, um, suggestion or question, um, about reconvening the, uh, re-pres- precincting committee, uh, the, the reason I like the idea is, um, you know, as Ms. Galvin said, she's looked at the possibilities, but, um, but they did have a hand in, in the work and thinking through things, and it might be, I don't know, it, it might make you feel, you know, as if your eyes are dotted and your Ts are crossed and, and, um, and, and who knows, there might be some creative solution that together, just talking through something, um, might, might uncover. I don't know, um, it may be with Alan Bishop's help. I, I, I hear what you're saying, though, about the cascade effect of, you know, making, making a change. But, um, but that's just, so I, I think that's a, a good idea if it can be done, um, in time for our meeting.
Certainly, I am all in to, to try and make it work and, um, welcome the opportunity to work with the redistricting committee again and see if, if there is an avenue, that we could make all of our precincts whole.
So our next meeting is, uh, we do have a meeting on Thursday for a very limited agenda. You're really just to close the warrant, that's a very short meeting. But our next regular meeting would be Wednesday, the eighth, so a week from tomorrow. Uh, we could put this back on the agenda at that time, still within the December fifteenth deadline. That may give an opportunity for that committee to meet. It would also allow us an opportunity to, um, have some follow-up discussion with town council, and, um, and perhaps also to, um, check in with our former town council, John Flynn, and see whether, what his thoughts are, what his memory of some of the challenges, the last go-around on this. And, and the fact that we also have, there's some former members of this board who may still be available to us, who were involved in, uh, the last time we faced a change in, in the congressional district for the town. I, I always think it's worthwhile to check in with people who have some institutional knowledge on these things and talk about what the likelihood of success here may be. There may be pros and cons to this new split. There may, there may be arguments in favor of, you know, having this new breakdown. Uh, there's probably some against the breakdown, but those are things that we can explore. The, the main purpose for tonight was for Susan to be able to make this very transparent, let the voters and the residents in the town know what the new plan from the state is and what the changes would be. And we can certainly welcome any input from residents who may be watching or may read about this in the newspaper and wish to share their thoughts with us.
Um, I, I did reach out to former town clerk, um, Jimmy Mullen. He did re-presenting four times during his time here. Um, and, um, he recollected, um, with me when, um, Milton was first re-presented, and at that time, it was divided into three, um, representative districts. Um, and, you know, a- again, he voiced that it was wrong. There was no legal action taken at that time, but, um, certainly the sentiments of both Mr. Mullen and the select board at that time. was great displeasure at the at reprecincting, or redistricting, I should say.
Mr. Fryte?
I just wanted to add, Madam Chair, that on the way home from Cork tonight, I did reach out to, to John Flynn to get his input on the matter, and he does recall the redistricting process and was gonna start to pull together our files over the past, well, 30 years as they relate to this issue. So hopefully I'll have those together by, perhaps as soon as Thursday.
And, and I think, you know, one of our members, William, but I think we may, we have some flexibility if we, if the 8th is not convenient for the reprecincting committee and the town clerk, we could probably consider adding a meeting between then and the 22nd, prior to the 15th, obviously. If need be. It's, this is an important topic for the town, and anytime we talk about people's voting rights, this is, it's an important measure, so I think we could try to be flexible and schedule something special if we need to on this topic, if that's agreeable to everyone. All right, does anyone have anything else before we let the town clerk hopefully go home for the evening?
Yeah.
And Mr. Fryte, who has to get ready for trial tomorrow? Okay.
I'll hook it out of here.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and we'll go back to item six, town meeting articles. We have the DPW director Chase Berkeley with us to talk about the sewer betterment for Randolph Avenue. That was an article that was submitted to a prior town meeting and why don't we ask Mr. Berkeley to give us an update on this item? Good evening, Chase, and thank you very much for waiting.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Happy to be here. Thank you, everybody and members of the board. So yes, so we've submitted an article as a supplemental to article three of the December 2019 special town meeting, which was to appropriate funding to construct a public sewer on Randolph Ave in the area of Gun Hill Street after being reached out to by several of the residents there with failing septic systems. So at the time, we had a, a very preliminary design for what that would take to construct, and once we began the actual design with, with the funding that was appropriated at that meeting, it was found that there's some significant challenges to build that sewer line, one being that the area is, oh, there's a lot of rock in the ground there, which is probably why a sewer doesn't exist already. And so there, you know, there's some physical challenges of rock removal to get the pipe into the ground. And then there's also a substantial amount of work that needs to happen on each property to abandon their septic systems and then upgrade their plumbing and electrical to put in pumping systems. So, so essentially the cost of this work has severely swelled, so originally, we had estimated around $450,000 without knowing what's underground. Now that we have detailed information about what it would take, it's increased to about 1.4 million in total for design, construction, oversight and, and all the related costs. So that's, that is a big number, but it's not a surprise given the level of difficulty. And so just as a reminder, the, the way that a sewer betterment project works is the town will bond and build this project, and then two-thirds of the cost of that construction will be borne by these nine homes that'll be connected to it over a 20-year period, and they'll pay interest on that, that essentially that loan to pay that back over those 20 years. So a third of that cost will be borne by the, the sewer enterprise fund for the, for the rest of it through a capital expense. So there's a couple of different variables out there. So this is, the, the cost estimate of 1.4 million is still an estimate. We have not put this out for public bid yet. And given the volatility in the market with construction costs these days, there's a little concern about what that actual number will be. So there's, there's kind of two paths we can choose to take as far as what number to put into the article for an appropriation. We can put a very conservative estimate in that we think would cover us no matter what. Or we do have enough time to actually publicly bid this contingent on that town meeting approval if it were to happen and, and have the true cost of construction to be able to present to town meeting for their consideration. So those are kind of the two different options we have in front of us. You know, typically, capital projects, we don't have an actual bid number when we appropriate them at town meeting, so it wouldn't, wouldn't be unheard of to do it that way. Usually, you know, we appropriate the funding well in advance and then develop the projects and put them out and, and work with what we have. I just, you know, the, the concern would be that we'd have to go back if, you know, the cost were to come in for some reason higher than we could even anticipate it with a lot of contingency, that we'd have to come back to a third vote, you know, to get those extra funds.
Thank you very much, Mr. Berkeley, and I have to say, I forgot that this would be a bonded article. I was thinking that this is something the homeowners are going to reimburse most of, but it, it actually would be bonded and then it would be reimbursed over time by the homeowner. So I probably should be recused on this item. I don't know whether we need to have any discussion on this, this, you know, the, we could also take this up Tuesday, today's Tuesday, Thursday evening. Or if the members who are here, I know Mr. Zulus had to step away, if the members who are here would like to have any questions, or Mr. Berkeley, then I'll just ask Mr. Doyle to be the acting chair on this one, and then I'll step out and come back in once we're finished with this.
Madam Chair, I don't have questions, but I'm ready to vote tonight if, if it's okay, so.
All right, why don't I just recuse myself for the sake of the conflict rules and ask Mr. Doyle to be the chair for this one? Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You're welcome. Just had a question for Mr. Berkeley. Chase, knowing the industry is, you do, what's your reading of the timing of moving on this relative to what present and future costs are likely to be?
Yeah, so the, if we were to bid it and get approval at the town meeting this, this February, we, I would expect construction to actually occur over the summer, but we, you know, we're able to lock in that bid with the contingency of approval. So we'll know that cost. Yeah, I think waiting, say we were to wait till like a May town meeting, I think we're inevitably gonna see some increases because with the amount of construction work about to be flushed into the market through ARPA funding, you know, the infrastructure bill and all that, you know, costs inevitably will go up because of supply and demand, so I think the longer we wait, the more expensive this gets, for sure.
Thank you for that confirmation. Returning to Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. I, I just, I could, my, my concerns are the same. Getting an RFQ out, or an RFQ out now, locking in a cost and being the fact that Mr. Berkeley wants to maximize next summer's construction season, if we have to wait till May, we're talking summer of 2020. Three, am I correct, Chase? Right, at, at earliest, right? So that's.
Most likely, yeah.
So you mentioned it most, and Mr. Wells, I appear to make it.
I make a, I make a motion to support Mr. Berkeley's request on the sewer betterment project for Randolph Ave.
Thank you. Second by Ms. Collins. Any further discussion? Hearing on? Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle? Thank you. And we can now return our chair to the meeting.
Thanks, Chase.
Thank you, Chase.
Have a good night.
Okay, thank you all. All right, so this leaves us with potentially six articles for the warrant. We've already voted to submit the homeowner petition for the liquor license. We're waiting to hear the results of the planning board meeting this evening. They were meeting at the same time regarding the accessory dwelling units article that's been drafted by Kathleen O'Donnell. So we'll find out whether they're going to submit that by Thursday, and we'll vote to accept any other articles opposed to warrant on Thursday at 5:00 PM. So if there's nothing else on the town meeting articles, we went to item seven, which is a committee appointments for the Milton 350th Anniversary Committee. For the viewer's sake, obviously, this committee has 350th came and went a long time ago, but there is some final work that this committee is still doing in terms of gifts to the town with their remaining funds. So this is really just to allow this committee to finish out its work before it dissolves.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to, are we extending the appointments? We're not, are we reappointing?
It's to reappoint them for a one-year term.
Reappointing, to reappoint the Milton 350th Anniversary Committee. Elizabeth Neville, Mary McGough, Catherine Faganbauer, Hyacinth Critchlow, Lyndley Sheridan, Emma Jean Maltin, and Kevin Donnie.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of the motion. Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And I'll ask Mr. Dennehy if we have any COVID update.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I am speaking on behalf of Health Department Director Caroline Kinsella, who is hopefully celebrating a wonderful birthday dinner. Happy birthday to Caroline. It's threefold, an update on the COVID positivity. Milton's 14-day percent positivity has increased slightly from 1.9% to 2.12%. Again, lower than what we're seeing on a statewide level, which is north of 3% these days. But it, it did tick up a slight, slight bit over the last two-week period, and she is reporting that they're seeing cases in all different age groups. Along those lines, the town hosted another successful free drive-through COVID test day this past Sunday at the DPW yard. 298 tests were administered, which is great. And only two, even better story, only two of those tests that were administrated came back positive. So we will again have another free drive-through COVID test day on Sunday, December 19th, at the DPW yard, 629 Randolph Avenue, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. It's free, it's a drive-through, and it's open to everyone, all are welcome. And depending on how we make out that day or how the weather treats us, we may have an additional day on Sunday, December 26th, the, the day after Christmas. If, if you recall, this is CARES funding. We have some approximately enough money for 590 tests to be administered. If we see another couple of hundred on the 19th, I think it would be prudent to run a smaller clinic on the 26th. More details to come on that. And again, this time of year, they are all weather permitting. That is our hub for all snow and ice control in town, and we would not be able to do both. But again, another successful day this past Sunday, and looking forward to December 19th and potentially December 26th for two more COVID test days. Tomorrow, the Moderna booster clinic will start at Town Hall. It's the first three weeks of December, Wednesdays and Thursdays from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM, again, in the Town Hall basement. Tomorrow is full, so that, the, there is availability for December 2nd, December 8th, December 9th, December 15th, and December 16th. It's available to people who are 18 years or older. They need to sign up online. There is no walk-ins accepted. So if you go to thetownofmilton.org, you'll see a link on the main page talking about the booster clinic. And again, just a couple of qualifiers. If people have already received the Moderna vaccine or Pfizer, they must wait six months to receive the Moderna booster. If people have received the J&amp;J, they must wait two months to receive the Moderna booster. And our health director is informing me that the bo- the booster dose is half the dose of the original Moderna dose. So again, it starts tomorrow, tomorrow's full. There are no walk-ins. Go to townofmilton.org, or you can call 617-898-4885 for more directions. Thank you.
Mr. Dennehy, just a quick question. I don't know if you mentioned this. I just stepped away for a second. It's very important. Did you tell them to bring their vaccination card? They must bring it with them.
Yes, sorry.
They need to get your card signed. You must bring their vaccination card.
Thank you for that.
Okay, good. Well, it's nice to see that starting up in town and hopefully we'll have many people sign up to fill all those appointments that are open. Thank you, Mr. Dennehy. The next item is community happenings, and we wanted to help the Chamber of Commerce publicize the Milton holiday stroll and tree lighting on Saturday, December 11th, from 2:00 to 5:00 PM. Mr. Doyle and I have been on a few phone calls with Mr. Dennehy and Joe Parlavaccio of the Chamber, and I know Mr. Wells has been looking, helping to arrange for the tree and for the equipment for the tree and make sure that we have a tree lighting on the 11th. Why don't I ask Mr. Dennehy to start and give a little update, and so now he's been doing an awful lot of work, and then anyone else would like to weigh in on this, please feel free.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, again, so it's, it's, this is the Chamber of Commerce. They reached out approximately two or three weeks ago. It's really starting to come together. There is a pamphlet. If you go to the Chamber of Commerce website, you can see a list of events that are gonna be taking place both in East Milton Square and over near Steel and Rye. Again, it's Saturday, December 11th, from 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM. All the pieces are coming together. There'll be a tree lighting in front of the Milton Art Center at 334 Edgehill Road after the stroll. Pictures with Santa Claus and our gracious hosts at the Milton Art Center are gonna do some arts and crafts there. The town will be closing Edgehill Road from Bryan Avenue to Boulevard Street, which is basically the, the length of the, the post office, shutting that road down for street fair-like stuff, the arts and, and crafts from the Milton Art Center and obviously the tree lighting that's taking place. So I've been told by Mr. Wells that the tree has arrived. In town, we'll be setting up with, with lights. DPW Director Berkeley and Consolidated Facilities Director Bill Ritchie are working on power sources and, and lights, and we should have this up and running very soon. But great work by the Chamber of Commerce and Joe Pavolaccio and everybody there. It's, it's, that's a volunteer group, and, and they're really extending themselves to make, to make this holiday season exceptional for, for our community.
Yeah, and with all the construction going on in the square right now on the deck, it's, it's a challenging environment for them to be working in, but they're, they're, I think they're gonna pull it off. They have, they have a lot of plans for a lot of family activities, and it's not only in the square. Steel and Rye is gonna be hosting smores for one of the hours, and the Forbes Museum and the Eustace State are also part of the day's events, so. And thank you to Mr. Wells. I know you were able to arrange the tree and the tree stand, and it sounds like we've coordinated all of that with the art center, so things are falling into shape, and thank you to everyone, including, especially Mr. Dennehy, who's been on many phone calls with Mr. Parlavaccio and.
I just wanna thank Eagle Farms, Madam Chair, who donated this tree so, so quickly, and I think when we have, an hour, we, we, within an hour, we had that tree, so that was, that was very, very kind of donating that to the town, or the chamber.
Yeah, that's terrific. Thank you to Eagle Farm. Okay, we had, well, we did have public comment, but I don't know if we have any response to that nice.
I'll be there. People are already texting me. They're already texting me. They're coming with their crock pots, so thank you to everyone.
That's good, good. Good luck with that. Great, great, great effort, and my brother's keeper does a lot of good work. There's no topics that were not anticipated tonight, but I have to report. We're meeting again Thursday at 5:00 o'clock, and then our regular meeting dates will be the 8th and the 22nd. So those agendas are starting to fill up, and we'll add the clerk to the December 8th agenda. And, you know, unless for some reason she needs a special meeting, and if so, we'll hopefully coordinate that by email fairly quickly. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So, Madam Chair?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
No, this is way too early for an adjournment by this point.
You can stay up, Richard.
I've got more work to do, Arthur. This is a busy week in my house.
For a short agenda, it took a long time. So I, I think Mr. Wells was a yes, and I'm a yes.
Yes, I was, yes.
Okay. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, Wells. See you.
Thank you.
Thursday at 5:00 o'clock. Thank you, Lynn. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.